Everybody stand so we can do the pledge of allegiance, please. Pledge of allegiance.
... United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor.
Pastor.
All right, it's my privilege to pray over this meeting. Let's unite our hearts in prayer together. Our Father in Heaven, we thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to gather and assemble here. Thank you for this body of people and leaders. We pray that you would bless the discussion of all that takes place. Lord, we thank you for gifts and talents and minds. Thank you for the vision of the work to do and, Lord, I don't know all the details of what is on the docket for tonight, but we pray that you would give wisdom and clarity. We pray that people would be glad in the work they're called to do. We pray you'd give them wisdom. And we ask, Lord, that you would be honored, that people of Walton would be blessed and encouraged. We pray that you'd bless this community. We pray, Lord, that there would be no people left behind or without, but that they might find hope and that you use this group and assembly and this board to help bring hope, health, and strength to Walton. We thank you, Lord, for our liberties to assemble, our liberties to express our viewpoints, to express our ideas and our hopes and plans. And, Lord, you are a creative God and you have given us the capacity to create. And so bless all that's done. We'll give you praise and honor for it. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. The first thing we do, we're gonna open up for a public hearing.
I make a motion to open up the public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Anyone have anything to say about this?
What?
Public hearing.
It's to override the tax levy limit established in General Minnesota law three dash C. So it's something that you guys do annually in case when we're preparing our budget, we need to go over the threshold.
Is there any comments from the public regarding that? Like I said, we do this only because in case we run into issues that we may have to raise more than 2 percent. That's usually where we're... It was last year, 1.1 percent, something like that. With all the increases that have happened since COVID, with the gas and the energy and everything else that has gone up and the salaries and it's kinda tough. I think the town raised 6 percent and I think the county raised closer to that. And so we're gonna try and keep as close to the chest as we can. But anyway, if no one has anything to say in the community here, in the public hearing, anybody in the board wanna say anything, discuss anything?
I'd just like to mention it's a budgetary tool. The town similarly adopted, say, way to give us flexibility with our budgeting process.
Formality that happens every year. It doesn't mean they intend to go over the limit. It's just, hopefully, they're not able to.
Okay, then we need a motion again before we vote. Need a motion to close.
Motion to close.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Now we need a vote. Does anybody wanna vote to...
Motion.
Motion to...
I'll make the motion to, we provided we can override the 2 percent tax cap.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Carry. Thank you. And again, we're gonna try and keep as close as we can. It's just that the prices have really, really got up. So we, if we don't need equipment, if we don't need things, we won't buy them. Only what we have to do. Okay.
Seen a motion.
No, we don't need a motion like that. We already here. All right. This public input, if there's someone here that would like to have a few minutes to discuss something, please raise your hand, say your name and address and what you're here for and we'll listen. Yeah?
Sandy Sheridan, 120... You want my address?
We do it for record, yeah.
I have 126, but I'm...
Okay.
And I'm here for the Walton Theater Preservation Association. And we are making some changes to, we wanna make some changes to the, to the green room that we hadn't even thought about. Tony, here's a copy for you for the process. And Ed, one for you. Dick?
Thank you.
Eric? And how long do you do, Josh? And one more for me. What we, what had, we had happen was as Steve came in and started taking down some of the wall surface, if you've been in there, you know that the brick wall is now exposed. And we just started the process. And in the process, he said, "Do you think there's a possibility that the stage floor comes all the way under here?" And so he opened it up and looked down and there's the stage floor.
So at one time, the stage came over?
It all came all the way to the back wall.
Ah, okay.
So what we would like to do, and Josh has taken a look at the wall and how the floor is tied into it and tells us that that will be a fairly easy thing to do. And, not for me, but for the contractor. And so what we would like to do is remove that lumber that's there that's supporting the wall or the floor on top. And actually, Steve thinks he can use that lumber because it's all in great shape. And so we'll be able to use it instead of buying another floor. We're gonna refinish that floor. And the change that we needed to make that Josh proposed was to show the stairs and a coming, coming out of here between the bathroom and the boardroom stairs that are stepping, that are stepping down to the green room. And that has already been put in that, so we've made that change. And we would like to get permission to go forward with our construction.
I'd move to allow the construction to go forward. Second. And the, just an added note that it would improve safety.
Yes. Yeah, 'cause you got some stairs leading out towards the back of the stage and there's some ankle breakers there, so it would be much better.
Ankle breakers, I like that one.
Actually, I think those stairs may be about that wide. I don't know how anyone else's feet are, but mine are pretty big, so.
Yeah, me too. Okay. Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay.
Thank you.
You have permission. Thank you.
Thank you. We look forward to giving you a tour when the time is coming.
Yes, would be nice. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Josh, very much.
I'm glad that you went to Josh first and got thrown. Because that would've been, first thing I was gonna say, but you took care of it. That's good.
Well, it's good to have somebody on your side there.
Is there anyone else that would like to have a few moments to say anything?
Yeah.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Peter Gager, 155 North Street. We're here to get permission to fix the light of the football field. There's still power across the field. So we're gonna need to put in new holes entrenched down the side of the football field and then run new wire and hook it up. We're just coming to get permission for that.
Wow, that's nice to do something like that. That football field is, I know all the kids use it. It's a nice, nice place. I always said it needs to have some work done, but I'm, thank you. Thank you.
My father-in-law actually put it in and I was ready to fix it. How perfect.
Wow. So it's still in the family.
I'd be thrilled to make a motion to...
Okay.
Also, sorry.
I'm sorry, yeah, go ahead.
One more part.
In front of the concession stand...
Yeah.
There's a bunch of rocks and stuff and it's kind of a pain. We wanted to put a concrete slab there from one door to the other for the benches to sit on too, so it don't seep any other aids and stuff.
That would...
That sounds like a great idea as well. I'd make that motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Thank you very much. That's, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for doing it.
It's nice to have people that'll stand up and do things like that. I appreciate it. I really do. Thank you. Anyone else care to have a moment to say anything? If not, we'll... Take care.
Thank you.
All right. The abstracts, I'm hoping everybody had a chance to take a look at them.
Yes.
We need a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the abstracts.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Carry. Thank you. All right. First thing, department heads. Mr. Smith? Close to Walton.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Everybody got the report? Any questions, concerns, prayers?
Prayers.
Yes.
Prayers that we're almost done salping the streets.
I hope so.
In snow.
I hope so.
For March is always a month we got a lot of snow. You know, but it doesn't stay long, but we do get a lot of snow.
We've been pretty lucky and when it does happen, we're not very happy about it, but we've been very lucky this year, so.
Yeah, we have been.
I don't have anything really to discuss. The only thing, I forgot to put in the report. We wanna hire one of our mowers this year, Kurt Ellison. He did a really good work last year. So I'd like permission to bring him on to start May first.
Need a motion for that?
What wage is he at? 1448. He's returning mower.
1448.
1448.
I'd make the motion to be hired. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Close. Carry.
Is all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Well, the one thing I'd like to bring up, and it was brought to Butch's attention and I don't know who ever got involved in it, but apparently the post office is plowing their snow in front of the library. And the library did make a complaint. Butch did contact the post office and they have failed to do anything about it.
And I spoke to a contractor that does the sidewalk Saturday after they did it and told them they cannot be blocking off the library's parking spaces. And then he said that they were gonna have it hauled out Saturday. It's still there.
They made a mountain.
Yeah, a big, big mountain.
I stopped and asked them and they said that someone was coming and they were gonna dump it.
Yep, yep. And they have not removed it yet.
But we have looked into it. We don't have much authority over the post office.
No. But if they plow and put it there, isn't that a violation?
The contractors could get a ticket, yes, for putting snow in roadway.
So you spoke to the contractor, right?
Yes.
We could find Uncle Sam.
Huh?
We could find Uncle Sam.
Yeah. I spoke to him. I was busy out there myself. I came around, talked to him, and he said they're gonna haul the snow out Saturday. And we're Monday and it's still...
Do you have a number to talk to him or?
I have no idea who they are. I don't think they're from town.
You can go to the post office and say something.
And I was gonna stop in there this afternoon, but I was busy, so.
If you do, if you will, stop in tomorrow, said they spoke to the board and the board said if they do not remove this, it's a violation, there's gonna be tickets issued. That usually works. Okay? All right. That's it now? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Josh?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Everybody got my report?
Sure did.
Not asking for anything this month or anything, really. Anybody have any questions?
No.
Well, very good report, as usual. Very thorough.
You might wanna remind everybody you're gonna be gone.
Okay, yes. Next month in April, 10th through the 13th or 14th, I can't remember. Basically, 3rd...
Excuse me.
April 10th in the evening until April 13th, I'll get home late at night. I'll be in Syracuse for my annual building officials conference. And April 18th through the 20th, I'll also be in Syracuse for my annual code floodplain managers conference and training.
Yeah, that's important.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bill?
Hello.
Hi.
Good evening. I guess nothing formal to ask for tonight, but just a couple of project highlights. The INI study we've talked about for the last month or so after the initial inspection was done. So we have some different options for the village to review, consider. I guess the feedback we're looking for from the village is to be what our proposal is back to the state as far as what repairs we would like to be considered for funding to cover the cost of those repairs, recognizing that any funding that is allocated likely isn't gonna be 100 percent grant, so it's not shoot for the moon and ask for a big number. It's, you know, if we were to get a funding, it would probably be in the range of 25 to 50 percent grant. And then there would be a backend that the village would, you know, be liable for through a long-term loan. So we wouldn't wanna propose a big project that would have a big debt service or potential debt service that, you know, isn't something that we could potentially encumber. So we're looking at different options about what may be affordable to stay within the current sewer rates, yet still, you know, provide some leverage from state dollars to do some repairs and reduce the INI to the extent possible. So there's a few different options and target areas with a few different types of repairs that have different pros and cons. So we looked at grouting as one type of repair where the joints of sections of pipe are grouted from the inside, which can provide a seal to prevent water from coming into the pipe. That type of repair has probably a 10 to 15-year fix because it's a grout and as the ground moves over time, you know, that's gonna flex a little bit. We also looked at lining sections of the sewer mains. This is something that has been done by the village in the past after the 96 flood. FEMA paid to repair a number of the sewer mains in the village. And at the time, lining was done. At that time, the technology was such that you could just line the sewer main and then they would go through from the inside and cut out where the lateral is coming from the individual house. That's not the most precise cut that was made. And then the seal, you know, there's not much of a seal on that penetration coming into that newly lined pipe. So it does give the potential for, you know, infiltration. There is technology in place now that allows for a sock, so to speak, to be inserted into the lateral to seal that point of connection where the pipe from the house comes in and connects to the sewer main. So there is a potential to do that. That said, there is a cost associated with, you know, doing those types of fixes. One of those lateral repairs is in the range of $5,000. You know, on one street, we could have 50 different, you know, repairs, you know, that could potentially be made. So like I said, there's a few different options to consider, but that's something we should look to work with the village to finalize over the next month or so to allow the report to be finalized and go back to the state to say this is what we would propose to fix with the funding that may be available to us. And then that's the basis for the ask to EFC for that funding.
But we don't have to... Even though you may say this is something that we might be looking into, we don't have to commit to it, correct?
You're not signing on the dotted line that you're doing the project. But if you're proposing that, you know, if you're asking for funding to do a given project and it's gonna cost X dollars, if they say, "Yes, we'll fund it," there's...
Well, then, I mean, then, I mean...
Right, that's, I mean, there's some expectation, you know, that's, that's the purpose of the funding for this grant is to kinda set people up to carry you through the planning to position you for doing a larger-scale project. So if they don't fund it, then, you know, there's, then there's not cause for you to advance a project because there wouldn't be funding to support it. If they did fund it, then they would be looking to have that be advanced and that would be something where there would be, you know, a grant, but also a local share. So that's what we need to build into the planning to make sure it's something that can be affordable to the village.
So they would fund something that would not be a major... Say we wanted to do something for $150,000. That was something we could apply for too. It wouldn't have to be in the millions or like, you know, that makes sense. The whole project was $3.3 million.
Right. If we did, right. And that's why we kinda broke it down, you know, section by section to look at different options and different, you know, priority areas so that that could be done, so we could do a smaller-scale project that could be more affordable to the village.
Are these areas listed in what you think the number is of priorities?
Is it just a numerical listing or the priority? No, that's, they're, I would say they're kinda in the priority. Yeah, that's the main. It's 16-inch and it grows to 22 as it goes downstream and more lines come in, but that's the line that goes past McDonald, under Delaware Street.
Under the river.
Under the river, across the fairgrounds. And that gets progressively bigger as it goes. But we did camera a good chunk of that line. That pipe is clay tile pipe, so there's a joint every four feet. And pretty much every one of those joints was, you know, dripping. So a drip may not sound like a lot, but over 24 hours, you know, one joint may drip five or 10 gallons. And then times...
We had that discussion. You had mentioned something to me that if we, like the, over the South River, that one they had, the big one, if we did that and fixed that, that we could probably drop, we just said like a couple hundred thousand gallons of, of going into the wastewater pump.
That potential. I mean, we have a lot of INI coming into the facility, you know, probably over half of the water that reaches the wastewater plant every day is water that shouldn't be there. So that's a good target to look at. And that was one of the ones we're looking at grouting, which is the more economical option to look at, so.
We don't have to make a commission tonight, right? But we can just talk about it.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the deadline, so to speak, to have the report in is June 15th. So we'd like to have some, you know, over the next month or so.
We're gonna have another budget hearing and things like that and then we'll find where we're at.
Opportunity.
And we'll tell you when we have it, just so you can come down and discuss some more.
Yeah, we can have some numbers sketched out. It makes sense.
The variability between the grant share of 25 to 50 percent kinda makes it more complicated.
Yes.
Whereas, you know, are we a grant 60, 60 percent grant? I mean, but obviously, you know, you do things incrementally, kinda take one bite at a time so you can get accomplished.
Right. Yeah, that's just the, on the sewer side, the state funds right now 25 percent versus water, they fund 60 percent. That's just the way the legislation is written that provides the funding. The federal infrastructure funding that was allocated a year and a half ago now, you know, trillions of dollars, that's, that's starting to come out. And that's bumping the 25 percent grants to 50 percent grants for projects that score enough points. So...
Even if we did 100 and some more thousand, we still have to score points on that as well, correct?
And that's, so when you're doing a smaller scope project, you're likely gonna score less points because you're having a smaller impact on your community. So it's a give and take.
Yeah, if you're doing, yeah, if you don't, I know.
Even the amount of money, it's still highly competitive, right? I think the village in New Pulse, which has a lot of updated infrastructure, had a scoring project and were denied on that investment.
And I believe they're under a consent order for INI in particular. They've, they've received another track of funding that's, that we've applied toward the village, the Community Development Block Grants, which are 100 percent grant, but they're, you know, they give up 15 or 20 a year largely to communities that have violation notices, consent orders that are...
Because we take care of our stuff, we get punished. It's better if we didn't do the right thing.
So just like, say, like doing the two trunk lines, that would be considered small effects. And that's, you know, 225,000 for both of them. So we'd be bombing for at least 100 grand.
All right, well, we have our next budget here and we'll call you down and we'll talk about it, okay? We have some money, but we need to find out what the rest of the villages... But this INI is a very big thing. We need to take care of this. It's something we've been talking about for years and years and years and we haven't done anything. And we need to step up and take care of it.
On top of that.
John, you can, you can, you know, down at the plant, you know...
I was gonna ask Bill, I mean, we're pretty close on the mobile for flow.
Right. I think we're 1.4, 1.5.
You're hitting the percentile where you're gonna end up targeting.
Right.
I was asking about, if we got a consent order, we'd have to be over that flow for a period of time, right? You wouldn't, if I, if I knew who's gonna be for like once a month, twice, a couple months and we'd get the consent order, I'd probably say, "Let's go over," just to get the...
You're on the bubble within that 90, was it 90 or 95 percent? I can't...
95, when you're 95 percent, you have to do a flow management plan, which is...
Pretty close there, right?
Pretty close for the time. There was some reason.
Around 85 or 90 this past year.
Yeah. Kevin's mentioned, again, that's the DEC.
Right.
Was there any thought on your end for the CWC or CWT?
Well, I would, that was my next comment, because I, I, next week or the week after, I have a meeting with the CWT, the town, and I talked to Jason up at the CWC.
Yeah, the director.
And he said that the DE, the city has said that they wanna help with the INI, but they only said they wanted the help on their plants. And I went right away and I said, "Well, if they're gonna help their plant, what, the rest of the plants don't matter? We have a lot of water that goes into the, into the river." And he goes, "No, I'm gonna talk to them again." I said, "Why don't we have a meeting?" And, and he said, "They're gonna send a letter to them." And so when I have my next meeting next week or the week after next, I'm gonna bring it up again and say, "Listen, we need help. If the city really wants to help us with the water, this is where they need to help us. And this could be a big, big thing for us, as you know." So I will keep pushing on that. Okay? Thank you.
That's probably our biggest discussion point. On the water project, we did send plans up to the health department, so when we get feedback from them or to coordinate with the village and bid that repair project to replace water lines and to work on the tanks. The Curry Well Project, the village is using the ARPA funds. The well drillers been retained. We got the insurance information from them for high well drilling. The work is being coordinated by Sterling Environmental. They provide, prepared a well plan that says how we're gonna do the drilling and the testing and whatnot. And that was submitted to the health department as well, probably looking at April, May timeframe to be out on site to put the well. So the well will be drilled. They'll be off-site for probably a couple of weeks while we order the screen that goes at the bottom of the well. When the screen comes in, they'll come back in and set that. They then develop the well for several days to get the water to be cleared up and then take water quality samples and do a three-day pump test. So there'll be a generator and we'll be running the well for 72 hours consecutively to make sure it produces the volume of water that we want. And provided it does, then all that goes to the health department for review and sign off. And then we look to connect it to the wellhouse. So ongoing process.
Is there any reason to believe it wouldn't work?
No.
We're not gonna commit to that, I know.
Before completion?
Yeah, I would expect the drilling to be completed in, over the summer timeframe and then everything, like I said, everything will go to the health department. They have to sign off on it. And that will allow us to make the connection.
Can we get it in before the snow comes again?
Yeah, yeah, that's a good one. So that well will be tied into the existing lines out in the field there, so we don't have to know, you know, that was the reason to put it there, so we could reuse the existing infrastructure. So we need to put a pipe in and then run an electric line from the wellhouse over to the new well. But, no, I mean, to your question, Steve, that's why we did the test well initially, which had a lot smaller cost versus the primary well, to kind of vet that a little bit, to have a better inclination that it would pan out.
Thanks, Steve. I know this was mentioned before, but it's important to tell residents that this was funded by ARPA funds, which is the federal dollars that we use for infrastructure projects. So, I mean...
Yeah, it's about a three-hundred-thousand-dollar investment in the village, you know, rough numbers.
Our wells are incredibly expensive to maintain. We have others that we have to deal with as well.
Right.
But, so, just glad that we're able to use those funds for this project.
Agreed. The only other ongoing project, wrapping up the highway garage, so we do have a few punch-hole sightings to look through the contractor, and then the DBW, which you mentioned, is working through the build-out of the interior, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shane?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Let everybody get my report.
Yep.
Yes.
Does anybody have any questions?
Still in touch on the turbidity?
Yes, we, in the last couple of weeks, it has been better.
We've been using a lot of chemicals, huh?
Yes. In the last couple of weeks, it's been a little better, but hasn't let up much.
Well, I see the slack plus eight-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty-five gallons, that's a lot of chemicals, a lot of that's because it's too busy on...
Yes.
What did the EPA have to say on their visit?
They requested some more information that we have to get together and send them by the end of the week.
That's routine, though.
Well, it's the first time the EPA has visited since I've been around, and I think it was due to the violations that we've had.
Turbidity charger.
Okay.
Do I get everything you need, please?
I believe so, thank you. And that's all I have, I have no requests tonight.
That's always a good thing. Plus a city fan, right? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, chief's not here, so we'll talk to him later. Trustee reports, I'll start with Steve, you got anything?
Nothing, thank you.
Nate?
Uh, parts departments getting ready for summer, spring and summer. We are absolutely looking for lifeguards. It's a great summer job, looks good on a college application. Anybody who's interested can contact Village Hall or shoot me a message, I'll be happy to point you in the right direction. Austin Lincoln Park will have our summer basketball and arts and crafts programs again this year from nine to noon on weekdays, and we'll have Jackie Armstrong returning as our arts and crafts director. And we are looking to hire a summer basketball director, so anyone who has a love of basketball and some skills and knowledge that they'd like to share with some of our Walton students is encouraged to come and apply. Call Village Hall or give me a call, and we'd love to talk to you. With the return of summer in the park, just like with the little video I made yesterday I put on Facebook, we're going to have our furry friends, our dogs, coming back to the park, people walking dogs and playing with dogs. So we need to remind people to keep dogs on a leash and to pick up after dogs in the park so that we can continue to have dogs in the park, because everyone loves them, but we can't have them leaving messes. And we especially would really like the people to keep dogs off of the enclosed Little League baseball field, because we had a real problem with dog droppings left on that field, and it's a real issue when kids are running out there. It's a safety issue, kids can slip and hurt themselves, and it's also just gross. So we really would like the dogs to just stay off that field entirely. But when people take dogs to the park, please keep them on a leash, and please pick up after them. It's for safety, safety and cleanliness. At the Walton Theater, we've got Creed Three playing through March fifteenth. Our featured main stage concert by Music on the Delaware this month is Amy Gallatin and the Hot Flashes, which is on Saturday, March eleventh, and they'll be playing some selections of eclectic bluegrass music. We also have a Coffee House concert this month, which is Sunday, March nineteenth, upstairs in the Andrea Patton Oster Room, and that'll be featuring Linda Hickman and Iris Nevins playing traditional Irish music for the St. Patty's Day weekend. And finally, this month, we do have a classic flicks as well, which is The Quiet Man starring John Wayne, and that's on Thursday, March sixteenth at seven P.M. And that's what I've got, sir.
I got a question, I got a call from Dave Breeze about them wanting to use the room for one of the concerts that are coming up, did you...
I have not actually heard about that. But it's probably the Coffee House, because it's two musicians. Probably.
They're just like that.
No, they do that upstairs.
That's upstairs in the Andrea Patton Oster.
Yeah, he had mentioned something about having a concert, they might want to use the room to change.
Use this room, or?
Yeah.
Maybe a certain...
Can we just make, I just make a motion to let them use it if they need it?
And then you'll take care of it, I, yeah, you'll take care of it, okay.
I make a motion, if they need it, to let them use the room for the concert, and I'll take, take care of whatever they need.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carry, thank you.
What were you saying, Stephen?
Huh?
It could be an unnamed celebrity group that's not...
I think it was, what's in March fifteenth, you say eighteen, something? Is it something that, you just said that, I was...
Yeah, it's, it's Amy, Amy Gallatin and the Hot Flashes.
Maybe Cherish the Ladies is going to shock us again to come back.
That is this coming Saturday, March eleventh.
Yeah, I think that's it, that's the one he told me about, so I'll tell him we got in touch with you.
All right, yep, if he needs anything, I'll try, I'll get a hold of him and see if it, what they need.
Thank you, okay.
Certainly.
That it?
That's it for me.
Anything for you?
Just that the progress with the DBW garage remains on track, some things are a little better. I know we started off a little, trying to find the way to make things fit, but we're on track, and that, again, that's another instance of a grant-funded project for a building that needed repair.
Except for the new roof.
Except for that was...
Do we note it?
Yeah. Addition to that, no.
Vic, anything for you?
No, other than the police report shows there were two-hundred-and-thirty-one calls that they handled. They're actually fairly busy, even though right now, because we're shorthanded, we're not able to actually provide guaranteed twenty-four-hour coverage. The chief does notify us, and we can't, the sheriff's department, so we do have somebody that can, takes a little bit longer, but they've been very busy.
Right there. Okay, thank you. Mayor's report, as I usually do, when I get letters from people, I usually read them. I have a letter that I would like to read, I already spoke to her and asked her if I was going to read it. This is Mayor Snow and the Board of Trustees. Unfortunately, there's a need to once again bring to your attention the situation the neighbors here on Cherry Street and Guild Avenue are continuing to experience. The property owned by Empire Metal Works continues to fill in a designated wetland. On approximately two-thirteen-twenty-three, the owner was once again having loads of poor quality filled dump on the land. We were told by one of the employees that they was installing silk fencing, that they had permits. I stated that we would like to see them, nothing has been shown to us. I have called various agencies, and what New York City DEP states no permits have been issued. Has the village given him permission to continue this wetland destruction? Somehow, I think not. Wetlands protection falls within the domain of the Army Corps of Engineers. This piece of land may be small, but it has an impact in the overall picture of wise land usage and preservation. As you know, the initial raising of the land, eight to ten feet, caused a water problem for the neighborhood. Did you happen to know it was the large feeding pond that was created directly across from our home? It's a wonderful mosquito nursery, you should all have one. I am not anti-business, I am against how rules only apply to certain people in certain situations. At what expense to the community do rules get overlooked? I think there are those individuals that do as they wish, and then if caught in some sort of questionable situation, they say, "Oh, my, I'm sorry," never having to undo the damage done. Damage has been done to this designated wetlands and stream that does feed into the Delaware River. Habitat for Birds, D.Fox, and plant life, just to mention a few, have been destroyed. The water ecology has been altered. We already know some of the consequences from that. I worry about the property values in this neighborhood. Our homes are well-kept, we pay our taxes and respect the laws and each other. Ignoring the situation adds to the decline of a Walton community where someone would want to move into plant roots, enjoy the country life, and pay taxes for the privilege. I wonder how real estate agents dodge some of the streets in Walton. Many properties are in poor repair and slovenly. This is what you want as village leaders. Please be more concerned about our neighborhoods. These are your neighborhoods as well. Healthy neighborhoods create and maintain healthy and prosperous communities respectfully, Mary Doig. I said, "I have sent letters regarding the situation to the governor, Congressman Molinaro, State Assemblyman Angelino, and State Senator Orbach, and the EPA." I called her on this and spoke to her, and there are a couple agencies that do look into the wetlands. The state is one, they've already come down, they haven't really done anything, and the federal government is another one, and they're yet to come down and make their determination. So we have been on top of it. Other than that, I know I always talk about the Bolin Alley and everything going on, I spoke to Dr. Doyle today, he said things are going well, it just takes a long time to get things done. They're still running gas lines, the lanes are all put in, six of the ten machines have already been built, they're being, by the end of the week, they'll be done. So they're making good progress, but it does take time. I called Gabby Ray from Gabby Ray's Diner and spoke to her this morning, and she said that a lot of the work has been done, they put up some dividers by where the seats are, and she said they're waiting for, they'll put in a water heater, and then all they have left to do is get the Department of Health to come down, they got to wait for them to come down and inspect it. So hopefully, that'll be soon. Dunkin' Donuts has put in the process to start going through the planning board and everything like that, so everything is working, it's coming along, but it just takes longer than we think. I mean, we liked to have it done yesterday, but, but it's, but things are still working.
It's just nice to know that people are investing in the village.
Yes.
This isn't just five dollars and a movie, this is big money.
Yeah. It's big money, and I've been talking to other people that are interested in coming in, so we're moving in a good direction, it's just sometimes we want to get it done, but we're not able to, it just takes unfortunately, and with the COVID and everything that's been going on, it's just been taking a long time to get stuff delivered sometimes, where you would get it in two weeks, now it's taken three months, so.
To Stephen's point, that's bringing another property back in the tax rolls.
Yes.
Significantly assessed value that's been an albatross for years, and to see that move on, that's incredible, and that they are investing in that.
Yeah. And I've spoken to the people, the engineers for the Dunkin' Donuts, and they, they're having a little bit of issues with DEP about DOT, I should say, about coming in and exiting. They don't want them to come in from Delaware Street, because, and it's a lot of traffic on there, so they want them to come in on Liberty Street. And I said, "But it's going to be a problem for the big trucks, because they don't have a place to pull into." There is a, there is a cutout over there. I said, "Where, what if they left a cutout there and just used it for the trucks?" He says, "As long as, DOT says, as long as no one else goes in, it would be fine." So I mentioned that to the engineers, so they're making up new plans, so I think there's a way around it, we can always do it, with the world, there's always a way.
It's like the Tony's shoe store driveway.
Yes.
Only you could see through his window, but on the other side, you can't see until you've run over the person.
Yeah, we try that. Okay. Election resolution?
Yep, I need to put another notice in the newspaper, giving the place and time of the election and who's on the ballot.
I make that motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carry. By the way, that'll be March twenty-first here at the Village Hall from twelve to nine. I encourage everybody to come out and vote. Number eight is the chalk day, art day for the school, June fourteenth. Got a letter from Patty Wood for the school requesting, we do this every year at Butch Knowles. I need a motion for that.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Carry. Other than that, we have to go into executive session to talk about police personnel. So thank you, everybody, for coming, and have a good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.